Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the budget here.
This is the official budget hearing for the 2019-20 school year.
Okay, so Lisa Gilek is our business official, of course, and she and I have been traveling about a little bit already to the schools. I'll talk a little bit about that later when she's going to go over the budget hearing. Sarah and I might chime in just a little bit, but I assigned Lisa to do. So Lisa, the floor is yours.
I'm the due.
Yay.
All right. Please bear with me, it's been a long time since I used a clicker. Okay, I have to say this. Has anybody gone to parochial school besides me?
Yes.
Does religious instruction count?
Never mind.
I'm with it.
Yes, I remember the clickers.
Eight years.
Okay. Have we seen none since?
Yes, I saw none since the clicker.
Was that what?
Okay. All right. Our mission statement, this budget is for the children, we are here for the children. We're going to create a safe and caring learning environment. We're going to expand upon the learning environment that they have. As you know already, our 2019-20 proposed revenue is forty-four, four, forty-two, nine, thirty-seven. It equals the expenditures of the proposed budget. There is no difference. I provided this document to everyone, and there's also additional documents up there. This is our official budget document. I took it on as a project for myself. When I got here, I was appalled at the previous one, so this is all recreated. A lot of hard work went into this to recreate it.
Thank you for doing that.
That's not all I...
I know.
Okay. Now you're gonna throw me off. So the revenues here are on pages ten and eleven of this beautiful budget document, okay? And basically, it might go, it does go in further detail as to what our actual revenues are for the upcoming year. You already know the difference between eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty, the proposed is eight hundred thirty-seven decrease, eight thirty-seven million decrease, primarily because of building a decrease of one point two million. Okay. Again, the highlights, this is a repeat of a slide that you've seen previously. Pilot increase of fifty-five, decreased state aid of one point two million, increase to the tax levy to the cap, three twelve, seven thirty-three, one point one two percent increase, and budget to budget decrease of eight thirty-seven, eight thirty-two. Okay, this was a request. So, if you have a house assessed in Lloyd, and I picked Lloyd because it is our largest area of assessed value, if your assessed value is a hundred thousand, your estimated tax increase per annual basis is twenty-six dollars and forty-six cents, and monthly increase of two dollars and twenty-one cents. And I did it all the way to four hundred thousand. And again, they're estimated, they're based upon eighteen nineteen equalization rates and the tax rates. Equalization rates will be known during July and August, and the tax rolls will be known at the same time. Lisa, several folks in the neighborhood, I don't know about other neighborhoods, they've received an increase in their assessed value.
Um, my staff made me aware of that.
Okay, so you know this, okay.
The housing market recovering, is my understanding.
So, let me try and simplify this for you. I believe all of our taxing municipalities have a hundred percent equalization rate. In order to maintain that hundred percent equalization rate, there has to be a certain percentage of that assessed value in the town each year that has to be adjusted. This is all on the assessor's side. So what the assessor does is look at the market values, reviews that section of the roll, and makes an adjustment. What will happen to your taxes? Well, obviously, the goal is to keep your equalization rate at a hundred percent. It will, overall, everyone's assessed values will grow. The pot will grow. That means it'll be a bigger divisor number. So your tax rates really shouldn't fluctuate a whole lot, because the number is growing. Make sense? Did I lose everybody?
No.
No, so in order for it to help, you know, these are estimated, so if someone has a four hundred thousand dollar house, it's estimated that their school tax is going up a hundred and five dollars and eighty-five cents, correct?
Yes.
And again, quick math, you know, so that's twenty-nine cents a day, you know, so when you break it down to a day by day, I mean, that's a, we want, because our goal, of course, is to provide the best quality education program at a price that our homeowners and our taxpayers can afford to support.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, whether you realize this or not, the budget has to be broken down by law into three parts, the administrative program and the capital. So this is just a different way of looking at the expenditures, details of which can be found on page nine of the big booklet. It will break each code down into those three parts, okay? Okay. Back to the regular how we are used to seeing things. The total expenditures we're looking at are four, forty-four, four, forty-two, nine, thirty-seven. And expenditures can be found on pages twelve to forty-one. General support expenditures include the superintendent's office, district clerk, finances, auditing, treasurer, purchasing, operations and maintenance, and some insurance, property casualty liability insurance, and the administrative costs for BOSsies. That totals four million, four, twenty-six, nine, sixty-six. Again, instruction is the meat of the budget. That's why we're here. It's for the teachers, teaching assistants, regular education, special education, psychologists, social workers, nurses, guidance, computer. That totals twenty-two, seventeen, three, twenty-five. Pupil transportation, just what it is, buses, bus garage, bus drivers, is one million, eight fifty-five, one eighty-six. Community services, thirty-five hundred, and I do need to do some more research into what exactly we use the community services for. That is thirty-five hundred dollars. Undistributed are the total benefits, the debt service, and inter-fund transfers between the general fund and the lunch fund, and the general fund and the special aid fund. That totals sixteen, nine, one thirty-nine, nine sixty, a decrease of one point four million. And again, that is attributed directly to the debt service.
Lisa, on the general support line, that increase, is that mainly due to that BOSsies shift in, I haven't gone through all the pages yet, but is that mainly due to the, I think it's just the carrying of the retirees cost?
Yes. If you look at page twenty-three, and I'll be like, then, the very bottom of page twenty-three. Okay? There's a nice little box which summarizes all of those expenditures under general support. And you can see where it says special items, one, ten, eight, fourteen. Right. That's your BOSsies.
That's the BOSsies, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, we, just to review for the board and for the public, we presented to the board the administration's list of, you know, these are our needs. These are, it's not a wish list, but these are the needs of the district. They're really almost like a five-year plan you can consider it because the items aren't going to go away, but, you know, we need to prioritize them. So after a meeting with myself, Mrs. Dablemick, Mrs. Gilek, and the principals and directors, you know, the two that rose to the top were the STEM teacher at the elementary school and the school psychologist. So again, just to remind you that we have no formal STEM program at the elementary school. This will be a special, like a class, and all the students will be rotated throughout the elementary level. So then we can develop a, and we added the STEM teacher last year at the high school. We can now develop a K through twelve STEM program. We already have an existing STEM program at the middle school. So this will be the beginning of a K through twelve program. The school psychologist, again, to remind you, Ulster County for many years took care of doing the preschool, special education, intakes, the testing, the placements, and the IEPs. At the end of the year, that's about thirty. Over the course of the year, it's between sixty and seventy. So right now, that takes our, because of that, we have to divide other things up among our school psychologists. So presently, our elementary school psychologist does preschool through grade three. So she's out of the building at some points because of the preschool. Then our middle school school psychologist does four through eight. She has to go down to the elementary. So now she's leaving the middle school. So there's times when the school psychologist isn't there. And then the high school school psychologist does nine through twelve, and also does all the out-of-district placements. So this new position will do the preschool, special ed, and all the out-of-district placements, so that then all of our school psychologists can stay in the buildings. So dealing with students, and, you know, we have seen over the years that, you know, we've increased number of students who need mental health support, and some of the supports we're seeing are more extreme than we've seen.
They're part of your, like, crisis response, even if there's a major event, maybe report and help mitigate that situation.
So that's what we'll be using the school psychologist for. And then just a reminder also that we did have an increase in cost for the trainer. So that was an increase of fifteen thousand dollars. So that's in the budget also.
I had a quick question about the technology teacher. We also had a tech teaching assistant that was assigned also.
Right.
And are those, is that person still going to support those classes? Because, like we said, that person's going to be seeing everyone in the building just about.
I don't know that that's in the budget for this year. I think that we...
The tech TA is not in the budget. So we're replacing the tech TA with a teacher.
Okay.
So there can be a program.
So there's a differential increase there.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
We would like, eventually, and, you know, kind of a wish list item would be to have that position as well, so that they could be doing more in-classroom support. And the teacher, like we said, that person's going to be doing more, it's going to be more of a curriculum, a specific curriculum. The tech TA is doing support for the other.
I'm clear on what the teacher's doing.
Yeah.
So the goal is that will become a special for the elementary school students, just like JMU or library?
Yeah. It'll happen once every six, once every six-day cycle.
And they did, way back, way back, it had something, something, they were, were a buyer, I think, it's something like a school way back.
When our, when our tech TA resigned back in December to relocate, we tried to replace that candidate. We could not find any candidates.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, just to review voter qualifications, registered voter, economic state citizen, eighteen years of age or older, Christine.
I'm nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. A resident of Highland Central School District for at least thirty days immediately prior to the vote. Absentee ballots, applications, you have to pick up an application before you can actually be handed a ballot. Applications are available from the district clerk, and the ballots must be returned to the district office in the sealed envelope no later than five p.m. on the twenty-first. And I have Lisa's information at the bottom. Just a little timeline. Today, we're having our public hearing. The board of education meeting tomorrow. I believe the district newsletter will be going out, and that includes the full disclosure information that's required from the state. The twenty-first is the budget vote, your candidate election, and it's six a.m. until nine a.m. in the high school band room. And then on May twenty-first, we have a meeting. It's funny how you can have two people prove this, and then you're up here giving the presentation, and you find your mistakes. Okay.
I didn't spot it yet, so.
I did. Proposition number one, what the folks will be voting on, the school budget vote, forty-four, four, forty-two, nine, thirty-seven, authorize expenditures for that purpose, and bus number two, bus number. Proposition number two, the school bus purchase, a total of four fifty-two, forty-six, four, I believe, three, two, five, seven vehicles.
Right, so again, the proposition, we're voting on three thirty-passenger buses. So a little smaller, you know, when you think of school bus, you think of a big bus, and that's sixty passengers. So these are a little smaller, have a medium size, two third, three thirty passenger, then two seven-passenger Suburbans, and two wheelchair-accessible vans.
And the board of education candidates, two, two, two three-year term vacancies. And we have two candidates running, so Jill Moore and Thomas Miller. Just a reminder, two propositions, board of education election, Tuesday, May twenty-first, six a.m. to nine p.m., and the high school band room.
Is there no issues with the voting machines, Tom? There's no issues?
No, no issues. We're all set now.
Okay.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa, one quick one. Do you have the information handy if one of our district residents who lives in another town, other than Lloyd, would be able to have those same calculations?
Yes, absolutely. It'll just take me a few minutes, but yes. They can contact me. And again, it's just an estimate.
No, it's understood.
I think the presentation is straightforward. I really liked the top sheet. That was a nice summary sheet to walk into. I was concerned at first about that loss of state aid, but after our following board meeting, realized that that kind of fell within our range of appropriation. So I, you know, this is, I think it's really good.
Any questions from the public? That's why it's a public hearing.
Lisa, just want to congratulate you on your presentation and the fact that you put your other ear.
Oh, thank you. Just doing my job. Thank you.
First one, thank you, Mr. Miller, and thank you, board of education.
I just wanted to, we should double back, Mr. Miller, to number three. We were, did we appoint the clerk pro temp, Lori?
Well, not yet, because we're in the public hearing. And then, I think when we start the actual meeting, then that'll be the first thing we do.
Okay. It's just...
The other way.
So motion to go into executive session.
For...
We have to close the hearing.
We have to close the...
I think you're first to close the hearing. So you can say it this time.
Shouldn't?
I think you can say it this time.
Yeah, at this point, we close the public hearing on the two thousand nineteen-20 budget. Motion, Camille, second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six, zero.
Why don't we appoint the clerk, and then we'll go to, then you can make the most ridiculous session.
Okay, be resolved, the board of education appoints Sarah Dablemick as clerk pro temp to preside in the absence of district clerk Lisa M. Certainly, we have more complete. Heather, Ed, any discussion on this?
I think she'll do an excellent job.
She had legible handwriting.
I've seen it. It's good. It's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Other than the handwriting.
So we're not going to, what, we're going to have this, the regular meeting?
Now we have the regular meeting.
Oh, so we're not in exact...
No, no, not yet.
Oh, okay.
Now, 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 we need, now he can make the most ridiculous session.
And, yes, we need, when we get to the session for a personnel matter.
Oh, yes, probably call, yeah. We have to call the meeting to order. It's okay.
Wouldn't say pledge again.
No, 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 you don't have to do that again. Call the meeting officially to order, and then we'll go to executive session.
And then we're coming back down to it?
We're going to leave, and then come back out.
It won't be long.
It won't be long. It'll be ten minutes.
Okay.
It won't be more.
At this point, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Motion. Mike, Ken.
Six twenty-five.
Who was the second? Ed?
Ed. Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? You're good. All right.
Motion to go to executive session for purposes of special personnel issues.
Thank you. Can I have this?
I second that.
Second, Mike. We'll be right back.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great.
And what time is it?
It's six twenty-five, and we'll be back to go to do the meeting.
No, you're good, fine.
No, no, you're good, you're good.
You're in the public hearing.
Yeah.
Ms. Jones, cover it up.
Always pick on Mary.
Okay. Acceptance of reports. Be resolved that the board of education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves and acknowledges reviewing of the following reports. Treasurer, treasurer reports, March two thousand nineteen, internal claims board report, April nineteen. Can I have a motion, please? Heather, Camille. Okay, any discussion?
Since I always pick on the internal claims report, I have to say, great job. It looks wonderful.
Good.
Thank you.
And I like the timeline, it's like, right away, I think it's helpful.
It's a challenge.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Personnel. Can we take?
If you have the block from A to D.
A through D.
Okay.
Anybody opposed to taking personnel as a block A through D? Motion, please. Ed, Mike. Any discussion?
To the retirees, I know they'll be invited to our end of the year retirement.
Yes, we have two retirements, Joe Williams and Diane.
Moser.
Moser's retired really over the summer, but thankful for the service.
Shouldn't? You're good? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Okay, so the high school has been very busy over the past few weeks. Prom was a huge success. I know many students were feeling a bit iffy about the venue and the theme, but it ended up being really great. All the students were really happy at the end of it. I mean, prom's not happy, maybe some of the parents getting the bill, but it's fine. Barbershop Quartet came to the high school and worked with the core students to further develop their skills. I know he was very, or they were very friendly and helpful in helping the students. They absolutely loved it. There were also some students that went to the musical The Bodyguard at the White Plains Performing Arts Center. From what I heard from the students that went, it was also a really great performance. This past weekend, our flex class competed in the Special Olympics. Congrats to Toby Meisel. He was the man, male student athlete of the year, and Jonah Super, who was the female athlete of the year, and together as a team, they won fourteen gold medals and four silver medals. Congratulations to all the participants. I know that was something that, after the Monday message, a lot of students were talking about. So I thought that was really great. I know a few students went up to them today and congratulated them. It was great. Last night, there was foreign language honor society inductions. There were thirteen Spanish students that were inducted, as well as eight French students. Seniors received their cords for all of their hard work within the past few years. And Spanish five and Spanish honor society took their first field trip like ever to Moi Mole, and everything while we were there was in Spanish. Like, our conversations were in Spanish. When we ordered, it was in Spanish. Every, on the bus, it was in Spanish. Like, there was no English.
That's great.
Yeah, so it was great to have out-of-the-classroom instruction as well. So I think that was real-life application, and that was really great. And that's it. Any questions?
Do you pay an American?
Yes.
What was the theme of their prom?
Under the Sea.
Oh, that's nice.
This is no comment. It ended up being nice.
Yes, it was very nice.
It was very, I think a lot of students had different ideas in mind of what it could have been, and it was very classy. Like, it was, it ended up being really good, so.
Business and operations, budget transfer. Be resolved that the board of education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following budget transfer as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget number nine, three, nine, one, seventeen thousand dollars. Budget number nine, six, three, six, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Budget number ninety-three, fifty-two, thirty-six thousand dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Mike, Camille. Any discussion?
You want to just maybe do a quick review of what those were?
Okay, the seventeen thousand was just moving electricity to gas, just changing that a little bit. The one hundred and twenty thousand, I believe, was for instructional substitutes at the high school and elementary school, as those codes were, you know, making it. And the last one, the thirty-six thousand, bus drivers, for transportation attendance and bus driver salaries.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Sarah?
As Chrissy has mentioned, there's been a lot going on for the end of the year. I attended the foreign language honor society induction last night. That's always a great evening. It's kind of one of the first steps towards all of the end-of-year celebrations. So that was really very nice. And we had a former student, Leslie Rodriguez, who came and spoke about how her experience in foreign language in high school has impacted her life as she's moved forward. So it's always good to hear or have our alumnus come back and to share their experiences with us, too. So that was great. We've had, I spoke last time about the High Tech High Professional Development. I spoke last time about the high-tech high professional development experience at Bosse's, we had the second day of that, and I also met with Amy Pooh, who's in instructional services at Alster Bosse's, I met with her on Friday to give her some feedback, as well as to talk about where Alster Bosse's is going with that next, so I'm kind, I'm excited to see where that is going. They're having an administrative PD in July, early July, that most of our, our instructional folks are going to, our principals, assistant principals are going to, so we'll be talking more about what, how we're going to further implement that next year. And really, we're, we're looking at wrapping up the end of the year, so I'm finishing up the last observations that we have going on, lots of really great events, of course, coming up in the next couple of weeks, so excited to see all of our students doing those things. And I'm spending, right now, I'm developing our calendar for summer work, prioritizing what kind of work we'll be doing, and that should be analyzed by your next, the next meeting, and I can share what we're doing. That's where we are.
Any questions for Sarah?
How about opt-out rates for the math session?
Similar to the ELA, not a significant difference, although I did have Mr. Fear called me and said they actually, he actually had a few third-grade families that opted back in for the math, so that had sent a letter saying they weren't going to take the math, and then the day before called and said they're going to register.
That's good news.
So, that's a good sign, you know, it wasn't a lot of students, but it was in, you know, slowly but surely, were a few more students taking the test every year, so, um, it's progress. And especially at the third, fourth grade level, you know, so it's, hopefully that continues a trend. You know, the middle school, especially eighth grade, even, even before there was such a thing really as opt-out, eighth grade was a place that we had refusals before, so that, that's, that's always kind of a struggle.
Sarah, where does like district stand in like LAP or city, whatever the acronym is these days?
Um, we don't, we're, we're, we're in good standing in all three of our buildings this year. Part of that is, you know, the growth that we've shown on our state tests. I think you must not have been here the day that we talked about that a little bit. We are in danger, um, as far as our refusal rate, um, next year, as well as students with disabilities as we have them, and then also in one of our buildings, the middle school, black students is an area we need to look more closely at. Part of that, I think, is because we have a higher population of black students than we did before, and I think before they, um, we didn't have enough students for it to register as, as a subgroup. So those are things that we're looking at as we're looking at our test scores. But, but we're, we're very happily in good standing this year and, and looking at those specific areas.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. So Mrs. Gilak and I have been on our roadshow presenting the budget, so we have met with the middle school staff, they're active, we have the elementary staff, tomorrow I'll be presenting to Rotary, and we also presented to the senior citizens, so they've been great. It is standing room only, um, they're like selling tickets on Stub House of these presentations. Very well, at, at the, at the VFW, okay, yeah.
They're priceless.
Must have fooled them.
It was great, they were, they were fantastic, yeah, they were nice. So I did want to touch upon what Chrissy also mentioned, the Special Olympics, because ju- just to, it was such a wonderful day, I'd never been to it before. And, you know, it's a complete community event, but, you know, when you have a big event like that, you know, you really need, it's, it, you need a few people steering the ship, and I have to say that Miss Felicello, Dominique Felicello, she is the flex teacher who really runs and has spearheaded this, because it's not just, you know, when you're there, I mean, there's thousands of athletes there. These are from students in school to adults, and you could see Highland, because they had the matching shirts, they had the hats, they had tote bags, we had our tent, which was donated by the Ed Foundation, so right there, there's the Ed Foundation making a donation, the shirts were donated by the Highland Rotary Club. Yeah, the, one of our bus drivers, Rebecca, helped make the hats, so donating her time, so there's another thing. Then again, just the spread of food for the, for the students and for the parents and for the volunteers, and again, that was stewards, Duncan Don, it's writing, Shoffr, it had a for, it's tops. And again, that's all Miss Felicello going out, getting those donations for, for the kid, it was just amazing. Again, absolute, definite shout-out to Coach Nick Cooper, who was coach of the year. So Highland, you know, they only give out like six awards, Highland won three of the six awards. That was fantastic. And I know there's a lot of people getting involved, but really, the people who spent the whole day there, you know, Miss Moore, Linda Moore, and Mary Santini were there all day, you know, helping out. So it was really just a phenomenal event, the students are so proud, they're gonna be talking to Mr. Zimmer about they wanna hang their medals in a display case, and we're gonna make that happen, so just like other, when we have trophies, we're gonna show their trophies.
I think that's fantastic.
Yes, so it was really great.
One of our students had the, the record for tennis ball throw of the Special Olympics, like, up to this point.
Yeah, Eric Fernandez.
Yeah.
You told him I wanted to see it in the river, and it's, it's getting close.
Yeah, it was fantastic.
I want to compliment the administration too, because here it was a Saturday, early Saturday, and I know you, you folks have a lot of events you have to go to, and we had, uh, we were very well represented by the administration, the Highland administration there, for, you know, all day at West Point, which was very.
That's great.
I think Mr. Boy was there, Mr. Judge was there.
Ms. Connors was there, yeah.
It was very nice to see, and it was, uh, the, to see that kind of a support of the district behind the special, uh, special needs community was just, it was very nice to see.
It was, yes, it was really nice. So that's all.
Wow.
Someone from last year, I believe we brought them in for recognition at the board, can we maybe potentially do the same thing?
Sure.
Absolutely, they actually, when I, I, I wasn't able to go, so I stopped in yesterday to seal their awards and everything, and they mentioned when they were at the board last year, so I'm sure they would.
Okay.
They didn't ask to go, they, I can't remember what the context was, what they talked about, so I'm sure.
We can have it the next meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing that recognition then anyway.
Yep, wait. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Board of Education, new business. Donation acceptance, be resolved that Board of Education upon recommendation of the superintendent accepts a generous donation of noted science equipment, estimated value of five hundred dollars from the Highland Educational Foundation for the purpose of science class instruction. Have a motion. Camille, Ed. Okay, discussion.
Yeah, so what this is, so the Highland Educational Foundation contacted, uh, Ms. Dudley Lemick and myself. So these are microscopes, scales, and some, uh.
Lab tables.
And, and lab tables from St. Augustine's, that, um, that was high-quality stuff that, you know, that they were going to be, you know, selling off, so as we always do, we don't ju, we can't just take something, so we had the teachers examine all the microscopes, make sure these are good, make sure we can use them, make sure we have somewhere to store them, absolutely, they match what we have. And then Mr. Miller went there to look at the lab tables, and these are high-quality lab tables, that, you know, the, the, the actual eye is much greater than this, but this is what the Ed Foundation donated to St. Augustine's to buy it, and then they donated it to us, so we graciously took it, thank you. Yeah.
That was nice. Okay, uh, motion?
Uh, we got that, all in favor?
All in favor, I'm, uh, yeah. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Six, zero, five. Okay, uh, old business, do we have, any old business we would like to discuss?
I was just gonna, I guess I'll bring it up under old business, that, you know, I'm aware of, transportation is not able to cover all the runs, and my understanding is there's away games for sports teams that, uh, I know they tried to reschedule those here, but, um, they just get canceled because we can't bring the kids out, and I'm just curious what, you know, it could be quantify that, how many.
Sure, I will find out, what's been canceled, if, if any.
How many more bus drivers would it take, do we need to have another drive, or? You know, I know, I know it's ailing, and I know it's a difficult time of year, but I, I, I think we should understand how many student opportunities are missed because of, we don't have the transportation.
I'll find that out, I'll get it for you.
Can I add on to that? Being in so many clubs, uh, we have, I mean, there's a great selection of them in the high school, but a lot of the students are in, um, clubs, and the seniors can drive, uh, some juniors can drive, but a lot of our students in a lot of the clubs that I'm in are mostly freshmen and sophomore, and lately, late buses have been getting canceled, and we've had to cancel our meetings because it doesn't pay to have a meeting with one or two seniors that show up and maybe two juniors. I mean, like, that's not feasible.
So even though we have these opportunities, they're not real, because we don't have the transportation, at, at, at what point do we decide to augment and purchase services if we can't supply the buses? And I don't know what the issue is, 'cause I know you'll take a look.
I will.
At the last meeting, we had the writers here.
We said it was fine. That's why, that's why I hold prize, because the last people just said it was fine.
It's been like within the past like week or two, like, I can't tell you how many times.
I haven't.
To be honest, Mr. Bodyguard, this might, you know, I don't know, you know, this, this might be how it's always been, and we haven't really picked up on it, but I know as I'm more familiar with students, and they're moving up the continuum, gaining access to greater opportunities, this is what I'm hearing, so.
I think it's a little better this year than it has been.
See, so there's a general acceptance that we can't provide all the transportation for the opportunities we tap, so it would be something to look at, if we can't handle it with our fleet, do we hire a, you know, a couple runs from a bus company?
And it does, it not only includes those events, but also end of the day post-session, if you want to call it, op-lexes and stuff like that. I mean, that's, that's just as important as any, any, any away activity.
What are you guys gonna do for like regions reviews, 'cause I know those are coming up pretty quickly, and I'd hate to see students, um, missing out on those opportunities.
I, I drop off and pick up my kid, that's what I do, there's reasons for you if I'm like seven to eight at the middle school and I have to drop it off and pick it up, like.
High school, high school ones on?
Yeah, high school ones are in, at the end of the day, I think there's two sessions and.
The two sessions, the thing with the, the, the two sessions is that usually that's late enough that all the other buses, the bus runs are done, so they're able to come pick it up. The, the real crunch time is sports runs where they're leaving to go to the run while the, while the elementary school runs are happening too, and so, so that's, that's where the real crunch usually ends up happening.
I'll get that too. Would you possibly see any impact to the regular bus schedule, like our buses go around on time? If this happening, we're, we're very short, our buses, morning buses, afternoon buses, are that also being affected?
I don't know.
I don't think so, I haven't heard that, but.
Yeah, if you want, maybe the principal's reports might have a piece in there about how transportation.
No problem.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
About sole business.
Miscellaneous, distinguished brand of education award. We are looking at.
That's the twenty-third.
Three of ours, I cannot attend that evening, but I'll email Lisa.
It's the twenty, yes, the Thursday.
It's Thursday of Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the twenty-third, twenty-third. So I will be attending.
I'm, I'm attending, but I'm at the Bosse's table.
Okay.
Right, we've got about four, four of them here.
Okay, all right.
I'll be there. I think you'll be there.
No, it's, it's, absolutely, no, it's, she's our voice there. Snub us. She doesn't want to.
Jill said, Jill waved to you.
She didn't last night, she didn't, she turned her head, she didn't, she snubbed you? Yeah, she didn't know us.
I believe.
We'll throw it over to Trish, she'll snub you.
Harley told them that I would do, that I would introduce, which is, which is fine, I just wanted to make sure no one else was going to do that, that we should.
I think you do, Charlie.
We should change that, if there's anyone that wants to add something beyond what we submitted for, Randy, let me know.
All right.
Item B, April two thousand nineteen program report, Bosse's.
Yeah, that, that was great, that's part of the agenda, I was pleased to see that. It's, if any of you had a chance to look at it, it's, they're very, very, um.
Great opportunity.
It is great opportunities for kids, uh, great programs, and I'm happy to see it's part of the agenda.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, at this point, we'll just ask for the public comments, if anybody has anything to offer. If none.
Happy teacher appreciation.
Yes.
Yes.
And happy nurses.
Nurse's Day tomorrow. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
All right.
So, Heather.
All right.